Okay, so welcome, everybody. I'm gonna go ahead and call the order. This meeting of the 18th of February 2021 City National Planning Board. Can we get a roll call, please?
Sure. Mike Peterson? I can see him.
Here and alone.
Thank you. Scott Leclerc.
Here and alone.
Adam Barley.
Here and alone.
Maggie Harper.
Here and alone.
Alder Mantenza. Alder Women Schmidt. Dan Hudson.
President alone.
Ed Weber. And Bob Ballinger.
Here and alone.
And Larry Hirsch. Okay, so we do have a quorum.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and read the introductory statement. So again, I'm Scott Leclerc, the Chair of the City National Planning Board. And again, this is the 18th of February 2021 Planning Board Meeting. As Chair of the Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by Governor Sununu as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12, pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note, there's no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which is authorized to meet electronically pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I'm confirming that we are, one, providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are video conferencing utilizing Zoom and public access to this meeting is provided via Zoom. And a link to the meeting is contained in the meeting agenda on the city's website. The meeting can also be streamed to the city's website at www.nashuanh.gov/318/ctv on Nashua's community link. The public may also view the meeting on Comcast Channel 16. Second, we are providing public notices and necessary information for accessing the meeting. Three, if anyone has any problem accessing the meeting, please call 603-589-3115 and they will help you connect. Number four, in the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods I've mentioned, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. I'm in control of the meeting and to the extent practical and advisable, the Board will follow procedures as identified in its bylaws. First, the applicant will present their case, followed by questions by the Board. Then allow for rebuttal period as best as possible for persons wishing to speak in favor or questions or opposition to any plans before the Board deliberates and determines an outcome. Applicants, their representatives, and other individuals required to appear before the Board are appearing remotely, and they are not required to be physically present. Applicants, their representatives, and individuals required to appear before the Board may have contacted the Planning Department to arrange for an alternative means of real-time participation if unable to use Zoom. Please note that all votes taken tonight and during this meeting will be by roll call vote. And the Planning Board meetings will be held electronically until it's been deemed safe to conduct more typical meetings at City Hall. The Board, the Planning Department, and the city thank everybody for their understanding and patience at this time. Okay, so next up on our agenda, we have some minutes that were sent in our packet specifically from February 4th, 2021 Planning Board Meeting. Does anybody had a chance to take a look at those minutes and want to make a motion as to whether they are ready to be approved as written or need amendments?
I'll make a motion.
All right, Mrs. Harper?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
All right, so you have a motion by Ms. Harper to approve the February 4th, 2021 minutes as written. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? Can we get a roll call vote on that, please?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
And that motion passes six to zero.
Okay, thanks. Communications?
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. On February 12th, you should have received an email from Matt Sullivan. And that email was a memo which summarizes the FY 2022 Capital Improvement Program. And later on this evening, we'll be talking about that and for a recommendation to the Board. And that is the only communication that I have.
Okay, thanks. Next up, report a Chairman, Committee, and Liaison. We don't have Ed here. I don't know if anybody else says anything. I don't have anything other than obviously the Capital Improvement Committee Subcommittee package, which you all have and we'll talk about during the later stages of the meeting, so. Okay, so moving on to the agenda. Starting with old business conditional special use permits, there are none. Old business subdivision plans, there are none. Business site plans, there are none. New business conditional special use permits, there are none. New business subdivision plans, there are none. New business site plan, case number A20-0206. This is the First Building Partnership Owner, Crown Castle Towers 06-2 LLC. New Singular Wireless PCS LLC and US Cellular Corporation applicant. This is an application and acceptance of a proposed site plan amendment to install 175-foot telecommunications tower. Its property is located at 71 Spitbrook Road. So for the Board, I'd ask, has anybody had a chance to take a look at the application and want to make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction?
Mr. Chair?
Yep, go ahead, Bob.
I would like to make a motion to accept jurisdiction over new business site plan A20-0206.
Okay, so we have a motion to take jurisdiction by Mr. Ballinger. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Barley. Any further discussion? Okay, can we get a roll vote on the jurisdiction?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
And that motion passes six to zero.
Okay, do we have somebody here from the applicant who wants to present their plan?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Board. My name is Ed Parry. It's P-A-R-E. I'm attorney with Brown Rudnick. I represent Crown Castle and good, I'm not on mute. Can everybody hear me before I?
Yeah, we can hear you. Just give your address.
Yep, One Financial Center, Boston, Massachusetts, 02111.
Thanks.
As I said, I'm here on behalf of Crown Castle. Just to give a brief introduction, Representative from Crown Castle is here, Paul Peckens, P-E-C-K-E-N-S. They'll just introduce Crown Castle, what they do, and how we arrived to the site. And I'll walk you through the site plan, I believe. Paul is on.
Yep.
Are you here?
I'm here.
Terrific.
Everybody can hear me, so good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak. As Ed said, my name is Paul Peckens. I'm our National Zoning Manager with Crown Castle, based in our Richmond, Virginia office. The address is 9011 Arboretum Parkway, Richmond, Virginia. We appreciate the time and effort that staff has taken to work with us throughout the entire process. It's taken us years to get to this stage. And interestingly enough, Crown Castle's been part of the Nashville community since the mid 2000s when we acquired the Sprint portfolio. For years, we've tried to work with Costco to keep the existing facility at its current location. Unfortunately, there's a change in their real estate strategy, and that's no longer possible. I want to reassure the Board that these activities are not undertaken lightly. They represent a significant investment in the community and take years to accomplish. So again, thank you. And Ed, I'll turn it back to you, sir.
Okay, great. So as Chairman, you read from the notice. Crown Castle is the applicant here, and we have two co-applicants, AT&amp;T and US Cellular. They'll both be attaching to the proposed tower. And just to give a quick overview, can I share the screen? Can I do screen sharing?
Yeah, it should be active. Yep.
So the building to 71 Spitbrook Road, it's called the First Building. It's a 1.68 acre parcel of land containing the office building. Can everybody see this here?
Not yet, no.
Oh yeah, we're not seeing your screen.
Try to share again, yeah, should be. Sometimes you just gotta try it a couple times.
Yep, let me try again.
It's coming, yeah.
How's that?
We can see it, yeah.
Perfect. So this is the parcel that we're talking about this evening. It's 1.68868 acres along Spitbrook Road. It contains a four-story office building here. Crown Castle is not doing the whole heck of a lot to the lot itself. It's a rather elongated lot that runs back some 500 feet. And what we're able to do to relocate. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Linda, can you just mute other than Ed?
This is important.
We go through it.
Was there a question?
No, we'll let Planning go ahead and mute folks and they'll leave you on, yeah. Anybody else who's listening, if you can mute right now, we'd appreciate it.
I can't attend this meeting because we don't have enough bandwidth.
Okay, should I continue?
Yeah, I don't know. There's a Dan Levin on the line that we can hear you. Can you mute yourself, please? All right, go ahead, Ed.
Thank you. So as I said, this is existing four-story office building here to the front of the lot. In order to, you know, maintain the coverage for AT&amp;T and US Cellular and we're proposing, Crown Castle's proposing to place wireless facility. I know this Board is aware of the details of telecommunication towers, but what we're able to do is we're going to place the tower to the rear of the lot here with the monopole being sort of in the center of the compound and will provide a fence compound around here. So we're not, you know, really having an impact on the facility itself with respect to traffic, entryways. We're not making significant changes to the lot except for this rear portion here, where we do take a couple of parking spaces. And we also relocating the dumpsters and placing those into an enclosure also at the rear of the lot. Just scroll down a little bit to get a... So this is the description of the compound itself. As I mentioned, it's fence compound. Monopole is here, the circular representation, and then it provides for colocation opportunities with the equipment pads for AT&amp;T, US Cellular, and we expect Verizon Wireless at some point, they have filed an application with us to co-locate on the pole. We had to make some adjustments to provide for appropriate turning radius here, so we'll be modifying the existing curved island slightly so that emergency vehicles and trucks can make the turn here. That's about the extent of Crown Castle's installation. We have provided stormwater report. Obviously, everyone has a set of these plans in their materials. We have submitted to all of the departments. We have not received any comments back, which have not been addressed. I know we worked with Linda and staff to deal with making sure that we complied with the checklist. We did request one waiver from the Board. And that is from providing all of the existing conditions. As you see, that we have quite a few of the existing conditions already included on the site plan, but the audience is pretty broad and requires a lot of the existing conditions on the budding properties, which we asked a waiver from. We think with these plans and the detail we've provided, expect it would be sufficient for the minimal impact that the tower facility itself is having to the rear of the lot. We did speak with the Engineering Department. We highlighted this is an existing drainage easement, which we will not be impacting. And as you'll see from the stormwater report, we we're not significantly increasing impervious surface. This will, the compound itself will be gravel, so we'll actually be removing some asphalt. The compound itself will have a gravel base. Traffic-wise, as we mentioned, our application typically one or two visits per month, especially at the beginning when the wireless carriers are fine-tuning the system and integrating it into their network. But once construction's done and the carriers are open and operating, they'll do maintenance checks every once in a while and upgrade if necessary. The carriers need to monitor their sites 24 hours a day, seven days a week, so if anything takes place at the site where it loses power or the system fails, they're aware of it and can get a tech out there to address any issues. With that, if you have any answer, any questions, we have a number of people here, so any technical questions, including our engineer.
Okay, thanks, Ed. So I just have one question. I think if I'm correct, right, this is, there's a temporary tower that you guys are using that's I think was that part of an earlier process and that this would replace that temporary tower?
Yeah, as Linda mentioned in her staff report, there was a temporary tower put in place by US Cellular.
Right.
That was installed back in 2019. It was removed in March of 2020. We did speak to US Cellular about that, and we reported to Linda that it was removed in 20 March 2020. So this will be a replacement. Oh, that's not even there, so it's not a replacement any longer, but this will provide continuity of service for the Costco site, which is what the temporary tower was doing for US Cellular.
Right, so there'd be no reason for that temporary tower to come back into that location at this point?
Yeah, I believe that Ken Kazera, who represents... Terrific. Would you, I don't want to speak for US Cellular since we have a representative, so I'll let Ken...
Go ahead. Ken, just introduce yourself and your giving address, if you don't mind.
For the record, it's Ken Kazera, 127 Ridge Road, Nashua, 03062. I represent US Cellular. And the temporary tower was a one-time installation when US Cellular was concerned that the Costco tower would be removed before we would have a chance to get a replacement like this. That's not the case, so there's no reason to bring the temporary tower back. Unless there is construction issues here and issues with Costco, but I don't foresee any of that.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, you're welcome.
Other questions for the applicant by the Board? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a general technical question. It looks like, it's not a direct butter, but slightly to the east, there's a property at 61 Spitbrook Road that looks like it may have some communication capabilities on top of their building. I didn't know if there's any possibility for interference or anything of that. I was wondering if you could speak just to the technical merits there. I'm not quite sure what those apparatuses do exactly, but it's, again, I think it scales off on the GIS at about 280 feet directly to the east, so thank you.
Sure. Yeah, I believe that's a Verizon Wireless installation. We expect that Verizon Wireless will come over to our tower. Once it's constructed, they were also on the Costco tower in anticipating that, you know, that might be disappearing. I think they relocated to the rooftop. There won't be any interference. Each of the carriers, and I represent most of the major carriers, they all live within their own frequencies, and any interference has to be dealt with. It's, you know, first come, a first in time. All the other carriers have to make adjustments, but being that far away and on a rooftop and knowing it's, you know, Verizon Wireless, there won't be interference. The FCC doesn't allow interference. They have a whole mechanism to correct it, so that would not be a concern.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Parry. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
Members of the Board, any questions for the applicant?
Scott, I have a question.
Yep, Ms. Hudson?
Can you just point out on the plan, I assume power's going to be brought to the site from somewhere? Can you point out where that's going to occur and what the nature of that's going to be?
I'm sorry, could you repeat just the beginning? I listened.
Sure. Power, I assume you're going to bring power to this location, and where's it coming from, and is it overhead or underground?
So are proposed, can you see my plans still? Just down from the existing landscaping, you'll see this is existing pad multi-transformer. And then our utility easement runs down the side of the property here. If I'm scrolling down, then over to the over to the site. Brandon, is there a transformer at the compound? Just scroll down. But you'll see, here's the utilities and coming down the side here.
Okay, and it's underground?
I believe it's underground.
Yeah, we'd need a waiver if it was overhead anyway.
It is. Ed, I can answer that. It is. It's trenched in underground.
Underground, yep.
Both power and fiber.
Any other questions, Ms. Hudson?
No, that's all I had. Thank you.
Other questions by the Board for the applicant? Okay, hearing done. At this point, I'll open up if there's anybody in the public wishing to ask a question or speak in opposition or in favor. You can go ahead and unmute, state your name and address for the record, and then go ahead and ask your question. Not hearing anybody. Linda, any hands up or anything like that?
Hi. I do not see anybody.
Okay, all right. At this point, I'll give the Board then one more opportunity while we're in the hearing to ask any questions of the staff or the applicant concerning this plan. I just have a quick question, just a confirmation from staff that the latest construction engineer comments are indeed January 28th.
That is correct, Mr. Chair. And I would also just like to also let the Board know that I was looking through the packet, and I did not see an email from the Fire Marshal's Office. And I did print one out this evening, and I did want to just confirm that the Fire Marshal's Office has reviewed the plans and that they have no concerns with this project.
Okay, great, thanks. Okay. Any other questions on the board? Hearing done, I'm going to go ahead and close the meeting, or excuse me, the hearing, and open the meeting. So we have in front of us a new cell installation, relatively commercial area. Seems like the packet was pretty thorough. We had a lot of photographic study. It seemed like it was pretty pretty benign as far, in my opinion, anyway, as far as cell towers go, but I welcome any comments by the Board at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know in the past with certain other applications, when the applicant has sought zoning relief in the past, we've asked them to expound on that a little bit, but I don't see anything in the variance associated with this application that would necessarily require further explanation. I think to maybe steal your term, it seems fairly benign, so I don't think that there's anything necessarily, you know, unduly uncharacteristic about this development, especially if there's already existing towers to some extent in the area. So it's just a general comment. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks. Other comments? Things the Board wants to talk about? Okay, anybody willing to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Harper, go ahead.
Regarding new business project A20-0206 site plan. Owner, First Building Partnership. Proposal is the amendment to NRO 979 to install wireless communication service services facility with colocation space for additional providers at 71 Spitbrook Road with one stipulation. The request for a waiver of 190-279 EE, which requires an existing conditions plan is granted, finding that the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation and 2 through 6 as written.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Harper. So we have a motion to approve this plan by Ms. Harper with the six stipulations, the first of which is the granted waiver. Do we have a second on that?
A second, Mr. Chair.
So a second by Mr. Barley. Any further discussion? Can we get a roll vote on that, please?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
And that motion passes six to zero.
Great, thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thanks, you too. Moving on with our agenda, so next up, we have other business, number one, review of a tentative agenda to determine proposals of regional impact. Does anybody, so we have the technical review meeting, February 1st, 2021. Information, does anybody have a chance to take a look at that? I want to make a motion as to whether there's any tentative regional or proposals of regional impact?
Mr. Chair?
Sorry, you got ahead of you, Bob.
Go ahead, Bob.
Go ahead, Bob.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry, I was fumbling around looking for the sheet of paper. I did review it earlier and I'd like to make a motion that there are no projects of regional impact on the, based on the technical review meeting of February 1, 2021.
Thanks, so we have that motion there and no proposals on the proposals of regional impact. Do we have a second?
Second.
Am I, Mr. Barley? Need further discussion? All right, let's get a roll vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
And that motion passes six to zero.
Great, thanks. Next up, we have the referral of the FY 2022 Capital Improvements Program. This is the program put together by the Capital Improvements Committee, which is a Subcommittee of our Board. I sat on this committee and put this together with the rest of the members. A lot of you are probably, a good chunk of you have seen these before. A lot of similar projects to some years before and some new. So I don't know if anybody has any questions or has any recommendations, if they want to make any, recommend any changes or anything like that. Typically, we're looking for, you know, just a, what happens with this is it gets a recommendation from us and then passed on to the alderman for them to actually vote and implement. Mr. Ballinger? Mr. Ballinger?
Th- thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, uh, due to some of the possible funding sources for, for these projects, I would actually like to recuse myself from, uh, other business number two.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, any other questions or comments on this, um, program from many of the board members? Okay, if not, um, be looking for a motion. Again, that would be either for a favorable or unfavorable with any comments. Mr. Riley?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you. And I guess before I make the motion, I just, I guess, Jess, did, did you want to, is there anything else that you think we should be aware of, you know, that's sort of different this year or?
No, it, it was pretty, pretty much the same. The process obviously got done remotely, which is a little different, but the same process gone through. Um, I think that, uh, you know, the projects that are reflected in the, you know, at the tops of the list, generally speaking, are also the priorities for the departments that have been presented. I would say, yeah, there wasn't any kind of major, I mean, one thing we did do with, um, the school department maybe this year was, um, we, instead of their deferred maintenance type projects being just one bulk of them, they were kind of broken up so that we could prioritize each one versus the bucket of them in hopes that, you know, maybe one or two actually do get funded versus a bucket being too large and being dismissed, you know, in whole. So I think that was a positive, you know, kind of change. There's quite a few things for like the airport and, you know, that, that has a lot of outside funding, um, that's coming in from federal funding. And obviously, the stuff that's at, um, the, um, wastewater department, a lot of it is regulated and solid waste as well. So I don't know, Mr. Hudson, you're certainly involved in some of it, you know, any questions or comments that you want to make, you know?
Uh, not really. I just want to, I want to thank the committee for their work. There's, there's obviously a lot of needs, uh, throughout, throughout, across the city, and uh, it's a difficult task prioritizing those and, uh, appreciate the committee's work in doing that. Yeah, I, I would, I would agree, you know, there's a lot of like regulatory requirements that we, uh, complying with, so those items, uh, show up improvements for those items. But yeah, no, I just, uh, you know, I want to thank, thank the committee for their work and, uh, you know, I think the, uh, the important items have been highlighted, the most important, I should say. And, um, so, yeah, I'll, I'll be voting to, uh, to recommend.
And, um, similar to other years, um, and others that the, the projects, you know, there's several projects in public works, particularly in solid waste and wastewater that are enterprise funded. So they come from a different, you know, bucket, um, than sort of bonds and stuff, so, um, so you, those, those went through as a slate again, which is pretty typical, you know, so. But, yeah, I mean, I think it came together well, and there was good participation by all the departments, so, you know. You know, good coverage.
Well, if, if no one else says any input, then I'm, I'm happy to go ahead and make a motion.
Great, go ahead.
Thank you both, uh, for that, uh, for that input. Uh, and with that, I would, uh, I would make a motion, um, that we, uh, make a favorable recommendation with respect to the fiscal year twenty twenty-two capital improvements program as, has been presented to the board.
All right, so that motion by Mr. Riley for, to pass along a favorable recommendation for the F Y O twenty, F Y twenty twenty-two capital improvements program. Does anybody have a second for that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? Can we get a roll vote on that, please?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
That motion passes five to zero.
Great. Okay, um, that's all for our agenda. Uh, if anybody has any discussion items. The only thing I'd like to pass along is a reminder, it's, uh, March second, at six o'clock is the next master plan. Public meeting, that it'd be great if everybody, uh, if you can get, get on that, you can sign up and, um, sort of RSVP to the meeting, and, um, this particular meeting, you get to, um, sort of choose what group of, uh, what, you know, certain topics that you might be interested in. And like land use planning is one of the topics, and I mean, I personally signed up for land use planning and, and economic growth, and they're going to, you know, group people together and have breakout sessions for each of those kind of topics, so. So that'd be good if we could get, you know, some more of us in that, uh, in that public meeting. That's again on the March second. I think everybody's probably got an email from planning, and I assume we'll get another one, too. Um, and then in the meantime, if you could, you know, get on the Imagine Nashville site, um, it'd be good to start taking a look at, there's the, um, there's a process on there where you can drop pins and you can put comments on certain regions and, like, like, you know, the other day when we were talking about the the traffic concerns we have with, uh, Daniel Webster, um, corridor, you know, that's a good place to put some of your comments in on that and pass them along to the master planning uh, group. And, uh, you know, so, and it's also a good place to just scroll around and look at what other people think and give us sort of input for decisions we're making on the board, too. So, so all that's right on the Imagine Nashville site, so just go right on it, you know. Anybody else have any discussion items? All right, good, quick meeting. So, uh, is anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We got a motion to adjourn by Mr. Peterson. Let's get a roll vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
All right.
All right, so we are adjourned. It's seven thirty eight.